Before we start this evening, the City Council just met on two closed-session items, and there is nothing to report out at this time. Good evening, and thank you for viewing the September 15 regular meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the COVID-19 virus. New cases continue to soar in Humboldt County. The city urges residents to get vaccinated as our best defense against the virus and the personal and economic impacts it has on our town. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting tonight, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. If you're logged on to Zoom, click on Raise Your Hand on the right-hand side of your screen. When it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on, the clerk will unmute you. You will have two minutes to comment. You can also access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen. Enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press *9 on your phone. This will raise your hand. When it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted. You will have two minutes to comment. And if you care to, please join us in the flex loop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we please have a roll call?
Mayor Watson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Adkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next, we have a report by Commission Committee, and this evening we have the interim report from the Transportation Safety Committee.
All right, we're bringing Chair Michael Moore into the Zoom meeting. Michael, when you can hear me, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you're on. Perfect.
Hello, Council. I am the Chair of the Transportation Safety Committee. My name is Michael Moore, Jr., and I'm happy to give the report. You have the written reports, so I'll just give an abbreviated version here tonight. Since the last annual report, the Transportation Safety Committee has met 11 times via Zoom. Key tasks included receiving and responding to public comments, receiving transit and collision reports, among other items. As a direct result of the committee's work, there has been restriping, speed studies, and radar feedback signs installed. Concerns raised by the community included speeding, requests of stop signs, vehicles parched by lanes, and intersection improvements. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
One moment.
And it's my first report, so please go easy on me.
No, you did a great job. Thank you so much for all of this. This is a really exhaustive list of things that you've done and things that need to happen. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just might ask the question maybe for you individually or as the whole committee. I mean, what about, I mean, for your guys' next-year goals and next year's projects, what are you guys most excited about and ready to put, you know, the most energy into?
Well, I would say that we are very interested in mode shift as a committee. And while that's not the committee's primary goal, I think that that is where a lot of energy has been focused over the last year. And I think that that'll continue to be a prime focus, in particular if we can add more arteries through the community that are safer for non-vehicular travel.
Great, thank you.
Can you talk about some of the traffic calming projects you guys have worked on?
Yes, so there is an intersection by Humboldt State University near the pedestrian overpass, and Nature could give the exact streets. But we are, we're going to do, the city is planning to redo that intersection to make it safer for bicycles and also to deal with some of the pedestrian traffic issues in there and to make it more clear for pedestrians or for vehicles. And so that's one project. Another project is, there's been a couple of projects in the Bayside area in particular with stop signs and some traffic calming diversions put in. And again, I'm sorry, Nature is the keeper of all the real good data and street information.
I have a question about the project that the Hsu students were doing regarding the wayfinding signs. I might have my information wrong, but I thought that that was going to be implemented this summer. Did I miss the signs, or has it been implemented yet?
I was under that same impression, but that wasn't, that was not through us. They came to us for some personal feedback, and we really thought highly of that project and wanted it to move forward. But that came through, they were rec majors at Hsu, so that came through the Park and Rec Department. And I believe Heather Schmidt came to our committee meeting with them for that presentation.
I can give you a quick update on that. We received the updated plan and the signs. It's, I would say, next two to three weeks, they will be starting to work. We just got an email like last week on that, finalizing the signs and the locations.
I just know there's a lot of people excited about it. We've talked about it at Main Street and such, so we're just excited to see it happen. Thank you.
Could you please give an update on the bike share program? I'm just curious, usage is my big question.
That is a very good point, and I don't have stats in front of me. It's on my computer. I can share exactly what the numbers are, but it's getting highly used, I would say. A lot of people are using, and one of our mechanic, they have to move the bikes from one station to other station because one of the stations at Hsu has a high demand. So we are trying to get more bikes in next year's cycle.
And what kind of things are you guys doing to increase the ridership on the ANMRTS?
Well, we are hoping to extend the hours. And I believe, Nature, the plan was when in-person classes started, we were going to start those, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Great. Do you have any more questions from the council, comments? Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Seeing none.
All right. Thank you very much for the report. Really appreciate your commitment and all the hard work you and the rest of the committee do. Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Next, we have early oral communications. This 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda referred staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time may be limited to two minutes. All other oral and written communications will be heard at this meeting under Agenda Item 11. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this time on an issue not on tonight's agenda?
Want to comment on an item not on the agenda? Go ahead and raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing none.
All right. Move on to our consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. A, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of September 1, 2021. B, biweekly report on general warrants. C, adopt ordinance number 1549 in ordinance to the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 6, Emergency Ordinance and Functions. Waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. D, adopt a successor memorandum of understanding between the City of Arcata and International Union of Operating Engineers Local Number 3 for July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, and authorize the mayor to execute. Adopt Arcata, excuse me, adopt resolution number 212-15, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending the Class and Pay Resolution for International Union of Operating Engineers Local Number 3, reflecting the 4% negotiated salary increase effective retroactively to the pay period that includes July 1, 2021. E, reappoint Serge Mihalo and Travis Kuna to the Economic Development Committee for three-year terms ending September 30, 2024. F, reappoint George Williamson to the Energy Committee for a three-year term ending September 30, 2024. G, reappoint Timothy Keefe to the Historic Landmarks Committee for a three-year term ending September 30, 2024. H, adopt resolution number 212-11, approving guidelines for the Home Investment Partnership Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, TBRA, program. I, award a construction contract for the Boyd Road Sewer Improvements Project 2021 to GR Sundberg, Inc., in the amount of $262,090. Authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $26,209, 10%, for a total not to exceed $288,299, to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. J, award a contract in the amount of $72,000 to GHD, Inc., for professional services to complete the project approval and environmental documentation, PA and ED, phase of the Annie and Mary Connectivity Project, pending formal authorization from Caltrans, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. K, authorize the city manager to enter into real property negotiations for conservation easement on a portion of assessed parcel number 503-271-028 adjacent to the Arcata Community Forest. L, resolution in support of single-payer bills for health care reform. Do we have any members of the council that would like to pull an item off the consent calendar? Do we have any members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
No items for the public.
All right. Please have a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. And next, we have old business. Introduce ordinance number 1552, adding Chapter 5 Residential Rental Unit Inspection Program to Title 8 Building Regulations of the Arcata Municipal Code. May please have a staff report. Should we wait a few minutes for Nature? No.
No, he's going to run it from his office via Zoom, so it'll be popping up here just momentarily. I see it on my screen now. So there it is. Yep. Go ahead, Nature.
Hi, good evening, and my apologies. I was trying to do from the council chamber so I could be physically present there to see the council members and answer the questions, but it looks like we will be doing through Zoom. So apologies on that. Again, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff, and members of the public. I'm here to give you just a quick update on our Arcata Residential Rental Inspection Program, just so that you know. This is just a follow-up of the update I gave in March of this year. We received some comments at that meeting, and after that, we also received some comments from members of the public. So based on that, we made some modifications, and today we are here to introduce the ordinance here. And before I make a recommendation, I would just like to give you a snapshot of the program and try to answer some of the questions that came through in the last few days regarding this program. So what I will just go over is like the inspection program goals, what the scope entails, how the registration is done, how the inspections will be done, how the self-certification program will be run, what are the program fees, and how that compares to the other cities. And at the end, I'll let you know the schedule of the program and when we plan to implement it. So, you know, this program has been on the city goal for a while, and we've been working on that, I would say, in the last 18 to 15 months aggressively. So still, the program goal is to address the issues of substandard housing in Arcata to achieve minimum health and safety standards in all the residential units and improve cities' housing stock. So how does this program apply to the units in the Arcata? This program is applicable to all the residential units in Arcata. There are only a few exceptions. The only exception is the room rented to a single individual in an owner-occupied single-family house. If a person has an ADU backing it, that will fall under this program. Hotels and motels are exempt from this program. Also, the other units which are monitored or inspected by other government authorities like the CDPG or grant-funded because they have their own requirements and inspection requirements, so we don't have to put them in our program, so they will be exempt from here. Mobile home park, because we don't have a jurisdiction over the mobile home park, so they will be exempt from this program. And all the new construction that was constructed in the last five years, they will be exempt from this program. So how would this work? In some ways, you know, once this program is approved or adopted at some point, what we will do is we will send a registration form to every single residential unit that we are aware of. We have a database in the city system, or we have created that in the last one year that we know who and how many people are renting the places, so we will be sending them letter with a registration form, and they will be registering to us. And we understand that we will miss some of the units, but over time, we will catch them as we go through the program, and people become more aware of the program. Registration must be renewed each calendar year. Owner can designate local operator. What that means is if a person who owns a property and does not live in Arcata or in the state of California, they can designate a person who lives in Arcata or within 35 miles of Arcata who could easily come to inspection, then we have the person. So who all will lead inspections? All the residential units will be inspected by the city, and each residential unit in the first phase of the program, they will get inspected, I would say, once every three year. I think that's our initial goal and plan. Based on number of inspections that city inspector can do, we believe that we will be able to complete the cycle in three years, so that's why we take three years. City staff will request or schedule the inspection via phone, email, or letter. There will be subsequent inspection. For example, the test or the inspection does not pass in the first round, then we have to do additional inspection on that. And there may be other inspections, like, for example, owner can call the city staff and request inspection, a tenant can call and request for inspection. If a person, you know, we don't want to go take the route of enforcement, but if a person is not fulfilling the requirement in the sense like there are violations, and he or she is not correcting those violations repeatedly, then we will follow our usual protocol of enforcement, which will be red tagging, and we have a program for nuisance abatement, and we will just follow that. Once the property is registered and inspected and it's in good condition, they will get a certification from the City of Arcata, and that certification will be good for three years. So there is a self-certification program, and during my last update, we did get some feedback on that, and we have incorporated that in this. So owners or operators of residential dwelling units may apply or enroll for self-certification. That will be limited to, only for five years. Inspection will be done only on the 20% of the total unit. The difference here is from the last draft is on this one, the city will make an inspection first, in the first round, in the first five-year period. We will not just allow the property owner or the local operator to just do self-certification without city's presence. We plan to do inspection within first phase of the program, so we will be inspecting that. We will not allow just any landlord just to send a self-certification certificate to us. Owners or operators shall pay both annual registration and self-certification fee. I'll go over the fees in next slides. Owner shall conduct annual inspection for all units on the form provided and approved by the city, and keep the records in file for at least for five years. And they should be able to produce those when city makes a request of those inspection forms. Owners or operators shall provide annual inspection checklist to the tenants to, we will make them, we'll make a request for them to provide that checklist of inspection of the unit where the tenant is living, to provide that information to the tenant so the tenant knows if the unit has gone through the inspection or not. If a violation is found, the owner-operator will be removed from the self-certification program for up to three years. On the fee side, we've been debating and struggling in some ways, but I think finally we came to conclusion, this is how, this is one of the ways it will work for everybody. So we made a tiered system for registration fee for the owners or the operators who have one to two units, and they will just pay $20 registration fee per year. And similarly, you know, as they increase the number of units, the fee goes a bit higher, not significantly or exponentially, but a little bit. Inspection fee is $70 per site visit, and that includes our city staff going to the site, making inspection, and doing the paperwork. Sometime it may take one hour, sometime it may take less, but $70 will cover that cost. Reinspection fee only if it's needed. If the owner or operator has not fixed the problem, then we have to make a site visit again, then there'll be a reinspection, and that'll be the same cost of $70. For the self-certification, there will be a fee of $40 per parcel per year. It's not per unit, it's for per parcel per year, $40 for self-certification. I just wanted to give a quick example of how that fee will look like. So I'm hoping you can see my mouse. Hoping, I don't see you nodding, but I'm hoping.
Yep, we can see it.
Thank you. So, for example, if a person owns one or two units and we have to do inspection, so the first fee will be, the person has to pay a registration fee, which will be $20, and they will, at the time of registration, they will also pay $70 because we have to cover our inspection in the first three-year cycle. So they will be paying $70 and $20 for one year. But since we have a three-year cycle on certification program, so they, in total cost for three years, for a person who is not on the self-certification program, they will pay $130 in a three-year period if a person owns one or three units. So that's total of 20 times 3 plus 70. If they have, no, we don't have to do any second inspection or anything like that. That'll be the cost to owner. Similarly, if the person owns, you know, 20 to 50 units, the cost would be for the same thing without annual certification is approximately $500 for three-year period. If the same person is in a self-certification program, the fee is 210. And the reason for that is there is a self-certification fee, and we have to, in the first phase of the program, the city, we want to do inspection of every single unit in the first phase, so that's why this is higher in the first cycle. But once they are in good condition and they don't have to do inspection from the city, they can just do self-certification, then that fees will go away, and then that will be a lesser amount.
Nature? Just to be clear, so somebody cannot just, at the very beginning of this program, they cannot just self-certify. They have to go through one inspection before they can self-certify. Is that correct?
That is correct. But you know, as you know, there are more than 2,000 units, and we will not be able to get to all until our program gets started. We will allow that, but in the next three-year cycle, they will get one inspection at some point. We will allow them, and they will get self-certification. However, we will do one inspection in the next three to five years. Any other questions on the fees?
Yeah, looking at some of the other cities that have passed similar ordinances, does anybody do the self-certification, you know, kind of like right off the bat? Or do they all have to get one inspection first on the first cycle?
I think that is the, it's not a big difference. It's a significant difference from those programs and our program. And there are other cities who allow them at start as a self-certification, but we have heard from other cities over the phone calls that, you know, they were not successful on that. Some people just give the paperwork to the city as a self-certification, but they are not in compliance. So that is a drawback, and we just try to eliminate that problem by having at least one time city staff making a site visit and ensuring that that person is definitely qualified for a self-certification program.
Thank you.
So similarly, you asked the right question, and here is just a snapshot of other cities compared to City of Arcata, their programs. Still, I would say the City of Santa Cruz and Fresno programs are still good programs, and they are running, and they do have five fees, similar to what we have in some ways. I would say ours is a bit maybe cheaper in the long run, but they are comparable in a lot of ways, the way we are doing and the other cities are doing. And all those are also the college towns. So I went through those items, and then what I wanted to maybe cover was, there will be an appeal, there is an section for appeal also, like, for example, if owner or a landlord or operator, they don't like our inspection and they want to say, this is not right, and I want to feel it. So there is a process for that, too. They can go to city manager, and then to the city council, make that request. There is a provision for that as well. And as for the schedule, as you know, currently, we don't have a building official, we also don't have a code enforcement officer or permit tech. Currently, we plan to hire that at the end of this year, early next year. So our hope is to get this ordinance introduced today and get approved in coming weeks. And then once we have a program in place, we'll work with it. And once we have permit tech and building official in place, we'll implement the program early next year. When we come here for approval of this ordinance, we will ask you to give us a date or give us some input on what that date should be for implementation period. So with that, that's just a quick snapshot, so please, free and not, there's a lot of information in this staff report as well, but this is just a quick snapshot of our proposed rental inspection program in the city. With that, I'll take questions.
Thank you very much, Nature. Do we have questions from the council?
I have a question.
Go ahead. Well, mine's about the fees, if we're, because that was kind of the last thing we talked about. I just had a quick question about how we came up with that tiered fee schedule for the registration fee, because it seems like other cities have kind of more of a flat fee, and some of them seemed lower, some of them seemed higher. So I'm just kind of wondering what led to the creation of this, these tiers, and how those numbers were, you know, decided upon based on, you know, what is it, staff time that would take to process these permits, et cetera?
So you're absolutely right. So that is based on how much time it would take to administer that program registration. You know, if it's one or two units, there's not a lot of time, so the fees, you know, is similar to other, it will be similar, but once there are more units, there's more administration work, more paperwork for administration, so that's what it's considered, and it's a bit higher.
Okay, so I have a question about potential fail safes for tenants that are living in what is discovered to be in a place that has violations. What protects them from, like, losing their housing situation if their units aren't up to par? I mean, what's going to happen? So I just want to make sure that's not exacerbating our homeless situation by putting people out on the street because they're living in substandard housing, and is there a way for some of the fixes can be done while tenants stay in their homes? Can you speak to that a little?
Yes, you answered my questions in some ways. Yes, so other cities have done the same thing. If this is a small violation, we will work with the owner and make a room in a fashion that, you know, a tenant can live there, and then the fixes could be done. But if it's a health and safety concern and tenant cannot leave there, then it's property owner's responsibility to provide another place for the tenant to leave.
And I'll just add to that. So we currently do code inspection. You know, it is incumbent on the tenant to call in and to make a complaint, or for somebody to call in, make a complaint on the property. And we have seen the full gamut. I would say 95%, I'm pretending to look at you right now, Nature, are usually resolved with the tenant staying in the house. I can actually, in my seven years in this position, think of two examples where we have required the property owner to place those individuals into different housing, and typically, it's into a hotel. to place those individuals into different housing and typically it's into a hotel for a week. They can still come in during the day and get their stuff if they need to while they're making those repairs. One, I should say of those two situations, that resolved one. One, I think they ultimately found additional housing because the repairs were going to take too long. But it is, it is the responsibility then of the property owner to assist with that and to pay a minimum of up to two months of rent.
I have a couple of questions, one of them is just, is to that, that we're discussing right now. What if the owner, you know, what if it's an owner that can't afford to make the upgrades? Do we have any, are there any programs that we have that could help assist in that?
Currently, the program, the way it is, it does not have it, but that doesn't mean that we cannot add. When we had a civil ladder program, we had a similar case when people were not able to replace their civil ladder. So we had a loan program, we worked with community development department with David Lawyer's team and we were able to put a loan program in place. So we definitely, we can do that too and I need to consult with David, but it's a possibility and we can add that in our program.
You know, I mean, I know our goal is to have safe housing, but it's also to preserve our housing stock. So if we have people that are on the, you know, on the edge and can't afford for repairs, we don't want to lose that housing either. So I think that would be great. I don't know if I'm, if I missed it or not, but do we have, is there a checklist that shows what will be inspected? Like what the inspectors are looking for, because I think that, it's my understanding that we're really just looking for basics. And I think that there's maybe some fear out there that we're really going to be nitpicking a lot of things and I don't believe that to be the case.
Great question, Stacy.
Yeah, definitely, that's a good question and I think that's why I put on my slide, you know, we are looking for minimum health and safety centers where a person could live. So we have a checklist, it's a two page checklist. I did not put that in my staff report, but we do have developed that for, and I can put that in when I come next time with the approval for this ordinance. Or I can just share that with you before that via email with all of you.
I think that that would be helpful for all of us if you're able to share it with us, thank you.
I, I had a couple of questions and I also just wanted to say thank you for, for all the work on this. I'm, I'm, I think this is a really important ordinance and it was definitely like one of the biggest things that I heard on the campaign trail. It was just people living in substandard conditions and, you know, begging for some help. And so I just, I had a question about the, the self inspection, kind of to follow up on what the mayor was asking about. I guess my concern with the, this initial self inspection is just that I feel that it may put too much on a tenant to have to be the one that calls in the initial violation. That would keep somebody from doing a self inspection and there are so many reasons why tenants don't report the conditions that they're living in. And I just, I don't want to put the onus onto tenants to, you know, call and say, you know, my landlord is not fixing, you know, X, Y, and Z. My living conditions are unsafe for my health. And so I don't, I, I also understand how limited the city staff's time is and I don't want to put too much on the staff either. But I think I'd like to see some sort of mandate that even if your first inspection, if you, your first inspection isn't a, is a self inspection, that sometime within the first like three or five years or something along that, eventually the city gets to you as a city inspection. Just because, yeah, I just don't want to see that be tenants not willing to come forward for whatever reason. Everybody has their own reasons and fears and those are all valid and I just, yeah, this is to protect tenants, not to, to put them in that position. And then kind of along that line, giving them a little bit of empowerment. I'd love to see some sort of like, it doesn't have to be like a formal thing that, you know, that includes like legal action or anything. But I'd love to see maybe like a tenant survey that goes along, like the tenant gets to fill out a survey, the landlord maybe doesn't get to see it. Again, protecting the tenant's interests and it can go directly to the city as another way to make it a little bit easier on tenants to speak up. So, you know, as part of the self certification or when the city comes and does their, their check. You know, the tenant gets a short survey that just allows them to check off, you know, it's very bad, it's bad, it's neutral, it's good. You know, the, the typical type of, of survey, making it just a little easier to speak up. Because I think especially for, for, you know, young students and things, it's not always the easiest to have to advocate for yourself.
Thank you. Yes, I do agree on that and hence we have that provision in our certification that within at least first three years, they will be getting inspection from the city inspector, so they will be making their, even if they are on the certification list, they will be getting inspected by a city staff.
So, Nitra, Nitra, I'm just going to clarify, so I think the intent is if you are a landlord in good standing, you know, with the building department here. We would like to roll out the program by focusing on those landlords that don't meet that standard. So for those first couple of years, we would allow those landlords in good standards to start in the self certification. The goal is, and I think where you hear it, Nitra, hesitate, the goal is that we will be able to inspect every single unit in that first three years. And then I hear he doesn't want to promise that because there are a lot of units and we're going to have one person. And depending on how many reinspections, we're going to prioritize those properties that require reinspection. But if things roll out really smoothly, we do hope to be able to get through all the properties in three years. I think we can guarantee regardless of how many reinspections we do, that we'll get through all of them in five. So those self certifications would go through that process hopefully within three years.
Awesome, I appreciate that clarification, yeah. I, I mean, I think this is, it's, it's set up to be a really excellent and successful program. So yeah, so that, I mean, that is great to hear, thank you.
And then on the second point, on the survey, I think that's a very good idea and when we do develop a website for the program, we can have that information on our rental inspection website.
Thank you.
I have a question just kind of about what outreach has been done, both to like tenants and landlords as well as to H S U. Because I, I know that the, the program in Santa Cruz was particularly successful due to partnership with UC Santa Cruz and working together as a way to incentivize, you know, student housing and especially in a time where we're going to be looking at building more student housing and all that. I just kind of, you know, would like to, to know what outreach has been done, especially to just kind of ask. Because to, to have the success of this kind of program, you really need both buy-in from tenants and from landlords. Because honestly, there are probably tenants that are intimidated to, you know, ask for these repairs. Or, you know, know that, yeah, I'm, I'm living cheaply and I have chosen to live in this semi-substandard housing and I don't mind paying less for it. And so just kind of wondering what outreach has been done to kind of create that buy-in. So it's not a shock for both tenants and landlords as well as especially, I mean, I know focusing a lot on, on student housing in this area is important. And so working with H S U as well.
I totally agree, I think our main, I would say like now there are old cities are main client, but H S U is a big part of it. So since the inception of this program, I believe it started with H S U or building official Nelson, who is not with us right now in the city. But he did reach out to H S E Housing and we have been working with them and recently also, they have seen our draft ordinance. And we did receive some feedback from, I believe her name is Shante and we had some meetings with her and she provided feedback on our ordinance. That's from the H S U side. On the public side and the landlord side, we have not done a lot of outreach and the only, not even outreach, I would say. We sent an email before presenting this ordinance to the council, we, whatever email we had for all the landowners or the, of the rental properties. We send them email regarding this meeting, so we have received a lot of feedback since then. But beyond that, we have not done a full public outreach. Our goal was to do a public meeting and outreach, but due to COVID and limited staff, we are not able to do that. But we will definitely be here, whatever we have heard from so far from the landowners or the property owners, we will consider them while finalizing this ordinance.
And I, I just want to add as like a comment too, I mean, we definitely have gotten a lot of public comment from landlords. But I don't think that, you know, we, we live in a town that has, you know, over fifty percent people that are renters. And so, you know, to be able to hear more from everyday people that are renters and how they feel about this program, I think is going to be, you know, an important step. And we can all, you know, talk to our neighbors and talk to people that we know, but to, to see it on a larger level, I think is going to be essential for my, you know, support of a program like this. And then also, I mean, just, just kind of adding to that too, and this could be even a piece of this, this ordinance. But also being able to kind of offer some sort of education on both compliance for landlords and also, you know, tenants' rights for tenants to know that, yeah, you, you can actually ask, you know, for this to be fixed, no, you can't be kicked out for this reason or asking for this. You know, that tenants actually have some sort of knowledge of, of where they, you know, stand with anything, you know, regarding repairs or their living situations, anything like that. So I think that could be, you know, an interesting point maybe to add to this or just at least, you know, maybe include at the beginning of the implementation of a program like this.
Yeah, definitely, and we totally agree with that comment of educating people, landlords and the tenants. And that is our goal as our, when we roll out this program and in our website and in our webpage. We will have a dedicated webpage for this program and we'll have all the tenant rights, our inspection checklist, most common violations and all the information that we can provide, whatever research we have done so far from other cities, lesson learned, we will try to implement in our website.
If I could just speak to that for a second, I talked to Shante from H S U's housing group today and they, she's very proud of a project they just finished. You know, it's a collaboration of people, but it's a program that anyone can take, it takes about four hours to complete and it educates you on all those different aspects, even like things like about dumping and trash and just, it seems like a really good thing pretty much for anybody to check out, so we could promote that with this.
Yeah, and the city has always maintained an up to date know your tenant rights flyer, I mean, it is actually very helpful. And it will roll out with this program as well, but it is something that we move out into the student community. And H S U has always been pretty proactive as students are moving out of the dorms and that kind of transition year of getting them information around knowing your tenant rights too. I do see Shante in the attendees as well, so she may be making public comment. Or would be available to answer questions about their program too.
I have a, a couple of different things, so one thing I'm struggling with is, you know, how to respond to all the landlords that are doing a good job? Because, you know, we know that they are out there. And I think when you're doing a good job, maybe you don't realize what else is going on in other places. But campaigning, I did have the same experience that council member Goldberg was talking about, Goldstein, sorry, was talking about and seeing some really, you know, unsafe places that people were living. So, you know, I know those are there and that's what we're trying to speak to, but there's a feeling of punishment amongst many other, and that's what we're hearing in our emails. Like why are we being punished, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing? So that's something I'm struggling with and I don't know if this would be helpful or not, but, you know, wondering if as we're fine tuning this ordinance, maybe reaching out to a small group of some of the major property owners to see if there's any type of, maybe they have some ideas of what could make this program more palatable for them, that would work for us too. I mean, I don't know if that's, you know, if, if that's possible or not, or if that would be productive. But it seems like it would be, it would, it would go a long ways for us to reach out and try to work and see if we could come up with some changes that would work.
I think that, that you brought up a very important point, yeah, just to, to any of the landlords who are listening in. That, yeah, I don't think any, we, there's, blah, sorry, long day. I'll speak for myself and say that I in no way, I want this to feel like a punishment. I think we have some very wonderful landlords, my landlord's really wonderful if he's listening. Who, who do take, you know, good care of their properties and provide, you know, clean and safe homes. And so, you know, maybe I can offer the perspective of, you know, for, for those of you that are providing really great living conditions, this is for the greater good because not everybody gets to live in as nice of a property as the ones you own. Because we also do unfortunately have some landlords or rental companies that are just, you know, not taking care of their tenants the way that they should be. And so, you know, I, I know that for all of you that do provide really great properties, that's what you, you want for everybody, I'm assuming. And so if I can just offer that perspective a little bit too, because I do, I, I, you know, I've seen the same emails and I don't want people to feel like, you know, they're being attacked or punished after providing a great place to live for, you know, ten or more years or whatever the situation may be. So, yeah, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
And I just want to add, I think you make a really great point too, just that, you know, it's a two way street. If, if there weren't tenants, landlords wouldn't have a service to provide and, you know, they're providing that service of housing to tenants that rent. People aren't going to want to rent from you if, yeah, you, you know, offer substandard housing and have a bad reputation in the community, right? And so, I mean, being able to even create a program like this could actually, you know, create more positive incentive and say, oh yeah, this, this company is great. They keep, their inspections are excellent every year and so on and so forth, to actually create, you know, better opportunities for some of these management companies to be able to point at, yeah, we pass our inspections every year and incentivize more people to want to, you know, rent from them. And kind of even, I guess it's already a pretty competitive market, but, you know, competitive, competitiveness that market a little bit more as well, so.
And we can work on, you know, any augmentation of the program, but one of the changes that we had made in sort of the fee structure between the previous version and this version was to try to lower that annual fee and to make sure that the inspection fee carried the full burden cost of the inspection. So that if you required more inspections and reinspection the program, then you were carrying a larger cost to the program. There is a base cost, right, like we're going to have one full-time staff that is managing this program and code enforcement in the city. And that staff member in essence, program costs need to be covered then by this program. But to the extent that we can put the burden of that cost on those that require heavier use and attention from the program. I think that's the fee structure that's been suggested here today. But yeah, happy to do any other outreach, happy to work with any of you on some of that outreach in particular. I know we've gotten a request in this week from the Realtors Association to do a presentation for them. You know, it's just a balance between how quickly you want to move and, and how much time you want to spend on that public outreach and either way.
Well, I think that considering that this is, you know, this is going to be a really pretty big, robust program that hopefully is successful. To me, taking a little bit more time and doing that outreach and seeing if, if we can, you know, get some more buy-in and problem solving from property owners or other people that have concerns, I mean, at least to make that effort, I would like to do. But then I did have a question, it was brought up, more than one person said that they, they, they do get inspections by the fire department every year. So is that every year and, and how, you know, if that's the case, then how is our program different from that?
Yes, there is a program for, to the fire department where they do inspections, but they don't look at all life and safety. I think they just look at maybe fire alarms and they have a very limited scope and our scope is a bit more than that on health and safety side. And so, but you know, we have in communication with them and to have a less nuisance to tenants and to the property owners. We will be working with Arcata Fire Department and schedule inspections with them when they do. So we have less problem for the tenants and we are not, not in those twice a year for inspections, so that's our goal and we'll be working with them.
So and just to clarify, the fire department is mandated by law to do multifamily complexes, but they don't do any of the single family residential units that are rentals in Arcata. So that was one, when this originally started in a discussion at the council level, we did look extensively at the fire department. And we were hoping maybe the fire department could do ours, but they're really just trained to do smoke alarm, ingress, egress. You know, it's a very, very limited scope. So as Nature indicated, we will, where we can, in essence, take, take on and manage their inspection for them or work with their inspector to try to build up some capacity where we could both be doing each of them. But they don't do as many units as we would touch, we have a lot of single family or accessory dwelling units that are not inspected by their program. Did I speak accurately, Nitra?
Yeah.
I, I agree that I think community outreach and everything, it's very important. But I, I'd like to see it happen kind of simultaneously as moving this. I'd like to see it happen kind of simultaneously as moving this forward, just because I think it has been something that's, that's been going on for a while, and I think it's kind of time to take the next step and, and get things rolling. I also think that, I mean, we just, unfortunately, we didn't get this done before students moved in, but, you know, we just had a bunch of students move in with the start of the new school year, and so it'd be really great if we could get this up and running before the next semester started, as, you know, maybe some students are vacating and new tenants are moving in. So I would really like to see this move, move forward more quickly, and then also, at the same time, do that really important outreach and have conversations, so that folks who are feeling concerned potentially can maybe, we can explain some of the parts of it that, I don't know, put, put people's minds at ease, I think, because I do think some parts of this ordinance might be, have been misinterpreted a little bit, at least from some of the emails that I got, and so just to, to let folks know that some of their fears, you know, are not actually written into this ordinance, and, and just, yeah, educate and have conversations, I would love to see that happen alongside just moving this forward.
Well, and I, I think that my understanding is that we do, like, we have time, because since we don't have an inspector, the reality of like, this program actually being put into place would be January, I think is the earliest, so I think that, like, we do have some time, and it won't, you know, it won't slow us down.
Yeah, you will be implementing my ordinance, so it will take introduction, and then an adoption meeting, and then a 30-day wait period after that, but Vice Mayor Atkins Salazar is correct, it'll likely be, you know, we're really pushing hard to get everybody on board to have this up and running starting in January. Now, but just to put out to the public as well, we do code inspection and enforcement every day. If somebody is living in a substandard unit right now and needs an inspection, they should definitely call their building department tomorrow. So the one thing that I did hear was around the requirement to do a tenant survey, so if you want to have any discussion about that, that would be a change to the ordinance that you would not want to introduce until we created some language around that tonight. But that's, I think, the only new aspect that I heard so far.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, and the, we're building a website around this, and can there, and that can be a piece of the website, just to have tenants, you know, answer questions over the website?
Absolutely, yep.
Is there, is there language in here for, I can't, I don't think that there is, but for, when the inspection comes, if they run into illegal activity, because, you know, when building inspectors and such go into homes, they see things, and so how do we handle those situations?
It is not completely addressed here, that could be done through, depending on the violations and illegal activity, it can be processed through our red tagging and code enforcement process that we have.
I think what she's asking, Nature, is if the building inspector right now, you know, comes across illegal behavior in the unit that is not related to a health and safety or structural issue in the building, not related to a building issue, how do they handle that? I don't know if we've ever really come up, I can't think of.
Like, are they going to be illegal drawing, or that's what I thought in my mind, that's why I answered that very quick.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, obviously, I, yeah, I was thinking, you know, if it's something horribly serious, you know, obviously that's going to immediately, you're going to call 911, but people, I think, do things that are illegal, but not necessarily immediately harmful in that situation, and so just, they might be, I'm sure they try to clean their, whatever it is, up before inspections come in, but, you know, I just, I don't know, that was, that was a question that was raised, and so I'm just asking it because I think it's valid. I think that's a great question, Vice Mayor.
If it's illegal activity and a person should not be living there, then definitely it will be red-tagged, and we will go through the code enforcement process on that.
And I, I just have kind of another question like that, and that actually might even be for the city attorney, but, I mean, because I know that with state law, there are limits on why a landlord is allowed to come in a home, and, you know, the time in advance, and that that could be denied by a tenant for a whole slew of reasons, and so, I mean, just what, you know, how would this interact with state law, and how can we ensure that especially self-inspections are actually taking place, and, you know, how are we, you know, what language do we have? How can we protect also privacy of tenants as well with something like this? So, yeah, that's a very brokenly asked question, but hopefully Nancy, you got the, the majority of what I was saying, but.
I did, and, and I'm sorry, was, did somebody want to talk before me?
I don't know, I just felt like when I rented, it was written into my rental contract that I was going to be inspected once a year, anyway.
I don't know, I was, I was talking to somebody from legal services about this, and there is like a large kind of, I think, gray area on why landlords can be allowed into properties and the denial of that, but I'm not, you know, 100% sure, and so would like a little bit of clarification.
So I don't want to speak to the legal relationship between landlords and tenants, but in this ordinance, what we have set up is an obligation to obtain consent before entering the property, and if the tenant denies the consent, the landlord will not be held responsible for non-compliance, because the tenant denied the consent, the city will then have to go after an inspection warrant. An inspection warrant's relatively easy to obtain if there's sufficient cause, and if the city has asked for the right to enter and been denied. So, you know, I, I'm sorry, I haven't researched whether the, the program in and of itself is sufficient cause to obtain an inspection warrant, but we'll, we'll certainly be identifying that as we proceed. But, but Nature and I actually did have a conversation specifically about protecting Fourth Amendment constitutional rights to privacy under search and seizure laws, and to make sure that the building inspector is not entering the property illegally. So Sarah, I'm not sure if that addresses those questions, but I, I did also want to touch briefly on the, you know, the sort of plain view observations that are made, but why don't I pause there and see if, if you feel like.
No, no, definitely, and, and, yeah, keep, because this kind of was reminded, I wanted to ask this based off of what Vice Mayor Atkins Salazar said about, you know, yeah, if they come in and they see something that is questionable or illegal, or, you know, whatever, then, yeah, what happens then? And so I feel like this question is kind of related to that, but, yeah.
So there is a, a plain view, I guess it's an exception, which allows probable cause to be developed when a person who is lawfully in the premises sees illegal activity. That would have to be conveyed to the police department for follow-up on a complaint, unless it has to do with the building condition and the, the building ordinances, the, the building codes that the building inspector is charged with enforcing. So, you know, if it's use of an illegal substance, the building inspector could call the police and say, you need to follow up, and then the, the police department would develop its own assessment of how it would follow up, what it would need to do in order to go in and obtain the evidence it needs to conduct a search and, and go forward. If it is related to the condition of the building, the building codes, then the building inspector can see anything at that point, you know, anything that is seen in, in plain sight. It may be that the building inspector has to go obtain an inspection warrant to get into certain places, if, if the building inspector feels that it is being wrongfully excluded from going into, you know, certain closets, utility closets, or garages, or, or, you know, small spaces, and it feels like it needs to, to conduct its inspection, I'm assuming that the building inspector would follow up on that in order to complete a thorough safety inspection under the building codes. Does that sort of help with your questions?
Yes, thank you, Nancy.
I, I have sort of a, like, follow-up connected issue in terms of privacy. What, what protections could we, like, write into this ordinance around questioning, like, immigration status, or just, yeah, just, I mean, we, we are talking about going into people's private homes, and so making sure that there aren't, I mean, I think the conversation already is being had about unintended consequences.
Well, we would have to research that. If the council is interested in that, we, we would need some time to, to add that language before you, you know, introduce and adopt it. The council has previously adopted policies about immigration status and, and assisting with the, the ICE sort of investigations around immigration solely, and I can't remember exactly what that language says. Karen, maybe you remember the wording in those, in that resolution. But, you know, once we start talking about this, I'm sure there will be a lot of other things that you would like to develop, some sort of protections around. Another alternative would be to go ahead and adopt this ordinance while we work on developing those kinds of, of sort of protections. Karen?
Yeah, I'd have to pull our original resolution, but in essence, I mean, I don't think that our building inspectors are in any position to ask immigration status. It was really around specific law enforcement policy around immigration status, so I'll pull that and get that to each of the councils. I mean, I think the, the bigger question would be an on-viewing illegal activity, and whether or not it was something structural, like somebody brought up like a hash lab, there would be more of a building inspector, building official issue that would come back, and they would handle code enforcement, code compliance in that situation, versus if it was something like assault, or, you know, something like that, you know, when they were in the, in the room. So, you know, I mean, fortunately, that's not something that we've run across frequently in Arcata, probably especially since cannabis is legal now, but we, I think always saw a lot of it, and when we had a lot of growhouses, that was a really common occurrence around inspection and code enforcement, that was a big area of our code enforcement for a lot of years in this area.
Yeah, the last thing I would add is that the, the code enforcement staff does work closely with the police department, and, and, you know, if code enforcement sees conditions that maybe aren't building safety hazards, but present other types of hazards, or, or endanger, potentially endanger, you know, people that are in the premises, my guess is that would be conveyed to the police department for follow-up, and it would not be undertaken in any fashion by the building inspector. Yes, and Nature's agreeing with me on that one. You, you all can't see that, but he's shaking his head, no way would the inspector do that.
Well, I think if we, you know, if we have language in other areas, and maybe it will be easy just to reiterate that in here, just so people know that, you know, it applies for this. So I feel like I'm, I'm comfortable to move forward as, as long as we, you know, have more room to, to make the necessary changes and updates, and also that we come up with some type of outreach for, you know, for some community input on this, just to see if we can get some more buy-in, and I think if it could be something that is more of a discussion and, and less formal, you know, would be great, so that people could really have a dialogue and a conversation.
I totally agree with that, and I also have another just query, I have a lot of questions tonight, and, and there are a lot of what-if situations too. I mean, so what if there, there's somebody, and I know that there are a lot of these in Arcata, like mother-in-law units or accessory dwellings, that, you know, might not be permitted or permitted to the full necessary extent, but these people do want to register, you know, with, with the, the city and, and, you know, comply, but they might, you know, be hesitant to, because they know that they might not have the building permits, even though it might be, you know, up to health and safety standards. I mean, what would happen in that case?
That's a very good point, and we did think about that in some ways. I would say, for example, if there is a structure which was illegally built and they never got a building permit, let's say that was built in 1990, so we will at least ensure that that building at that point is in compliance with the code that was in place of 1990, but if they have to do a restructure or modeling, or remodeling to the, if they have violations and they have to do reconstruction, then they have, we have to bring them back to the current code.
Thank you.
All right, it's my turn now. Can the council give a draft of the self-certification program checklist, whenever that's available?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Yes, we'll share that with you.
Okay, thanks. And I noticed just the reading throughout the document, in some areas, it talks about an inspector, in other areas it talks about inspectors, and I'm just, is there going to be more than one inspector, or just one?
Currently, we have one inspector in the city staff, the person who will be running the resident inspection program, he or she will also be an inspector, so we will have two inspectors at a given time in future, but currently we just have one.
Okay. And then, what if the, the tenant themselves does not want to be inspected and denies access to the inspector? What do we do in that situation?
Well, that, I think Nancy mentioned, and I think it's laid out in our ordinance, that we have to get a warrant in that situation, and we'll get that before we enter the place.
And then, there is like, I think, a fee or two that's not, not entered tonight, like, for example, the misinspection appointments fee. When will that be available? Like, is there a fee schedule for the, for all the fees?
We have a draft form, and when we bring this next time to you, it will be brought to you as a resolution. I believe I need to work with Andrea and see in the budget process how we do that, it will be added to our max fee schedule, and that will be amended, and we'll talk to you for your review and approval before it's getting implemented.
In some areas, it's referred to as the residential rental unit inspection program, but in other areas, it's the residential rental dwelling unit inspection program, and I'm just wondering what the final, finalized name is of the program?
Dwelling unit, residential dwelling unit. Two, fix that.
No problem.
Thank you.
I think those are all of my questions, I think the council covered a lot of other questions I had. So unless there's any more comments or questions from the council, let's go ahead and take public comment.
All right, right now, go ahead and raise your hand on Zoom if you'd like to make public comment. We are going to start with Matt, and then we'll go to a call-in user.
Do we have somebody operating a timer?
We do.
Is anybody see me?
Yep.
Oh, there we go.
We can hear you.
Oh, but you can't see me, okay, let me see if I.
I can do the timer, Karen, if you want.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead, my hair's not coming. Hey, I was coming online tonight to talk about the community ambassador program, which I'm really excited about, and then I see this item above it, and I'm like shocked. I'm a local businessman, my office is down at 944 H Street, I spend about 12 hours a day down there, seven days a week, and lived here all my life, and this is literally the first time I've heard of this ordinance. So I'm really frustrated with the outreach, and I don't know what happened, I just hope the city council, I love Nature, by the way, he's a great guy, but this is the first time I'm hearing about this, and I'm a property manager and a property owner and a landlord, and I'm kind of like, what the hell? This just popped up out of nowhere. So a couple of quick comments, I'm prepared. We're already getting hit with inspections by the fire department, the insurance companies now come and inspect us once a year, so we have all that time involved, we get hit with your city licensing fees, business license fees, and the unintended consequence of all this great stuff is more expense, not only fees, but you missed a point here, is the landlord's time, the property manager's time. Everybody, don't worry, Nature, I'm going to come see you, and you're going to get all these notes right. There's a lot of time from. There's a lot of time from my staff, my employees, my landlords, they're going to have to be involved in too. And you know what? This is going to have the unintended consequence of adding to overhead of owning and managing rental units. And I hate to say it, but we always try to keep our rents kind of mediocre so we keep our tenants and we don't have a lot of turnover, but someone's got to pay for this. So staff needs to think about that. Also, it's like all good deeds must be punished. And you have 99% of the landlords in Arcata doing great. And you drive around and you see it, but there's that 1% that are just, you know, bad people that aren't getting the job done, that are treating people badly. And I feel like you're, you're making everybody else pay for a couple people's mistakes or bad service, and there must be a better way of dealing with this, like maybe a tenant outreach saying, hey, if your tenant, if your landlord's screwing with you and they're not fixing your toilet and you're not being habitable, reach out to us, we can help you. Here's an attorney, here's a city staff member.
Mr. Babich, that's your, that's your two minutes on this, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, okay.
Thank you.
I'll get back to Nature on this in person.
All right.
All right, call-in user ending in three, four, five, one. Go ahead. Can you unmute yourself, caller? So close. Call-in user, there you go.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Go ahead.
Now you muted yourself again. You had it there. Call-in users, there you go.
Okay, there we go. Hi, y'all, this is Shante Cat, the off-campus housing coordinator at HSU. I'm on Zoom, I think, too, so I apologize if I'm taking up two spaces. First and foremost, I am so excited about this program. I've been talking with Nelson Membreno and Sofia Pereira since 2018, 19, and giving documentation on how to create a program like this. Second of all, the creation of the Humboldt Tenant-Landlord Collaboration was specifically designed to go along the side of a program similar to this. We are officially public. And Karen Deemer, I know you've worked with us, you're actually in a large portion of the videos. Um, and also, Madam Mayor, thank you for bringing up some of the topics that we talked about regarding concern about landlords who potentially might not have the economic feasibility to fix their properties. There are a couple other things that I had concerns about. One of them was the, um, there is a part in one of the clauses that cites that there could be an increase in rent for collection for these fees. And I'm concerned about that for the Tenant Protection Act of 2019, AB 1482, which permits annual rent increases for 5%. And so I, I would love to see some more work done on this RRI P. That does work around, you know, the fact of the cost and how that would affect tenants. Other than that, I'm pretty confident that this program would help support many of our tenants. I worked with over 2,800 tenants this semester, and I am continuously embargted with issues around housing in our area.
I'm so sorry, that's your two minutes. You want to just wrap up your comment really quick?
Of course, no, I was having a problem turning the mute on. I think that's it. I just really want to share that the HTLC program is designed for specifically these types of rental inspection programs. I have Pockton, Natra, and all of, most of our city people in the creation of this program, and I hope that we can be of service and support this.
Thank you.
Okay, our next caller, last name Dryer.
Yes, hello, this is Kevin. I just want to thank the council and the staff for really trying to make Arcata a better place to live. But I'm calling to speak against this ordinance in its entirety. And if it's not completely dropped, then some details about it, and I haven't had a chance to read the ordinance. I am a member of the Humboldt Association of Realtors. I'm not representing them here. I believe we'll have spokespeople for, for that, but I'm also a landlord in, in Arcata and a past resident of Arcata. I just have six key points to make here. We already have code enforcement. We don't need to invade the privacy of every single tenant in town. A lot of the code problems are tenant caused, a lot of the damages are tenant caused. Sometimes they string up, you know, illegal electrical, the fire department catches that. They don't just look at ingress and egress and actual smoke detectors. They look at things like blocked fire extinguishers, illegal wiring, unsafe wiring. Okay? It also adds just a whole nother layer of red tape and bureaucracy in town. It costs the city money, it costs the landlord's money, it's a pain in the butt, it's just going to really just add to the burden of creating housing in Arcata. I think city attorney should look into the city of San Rafael that used to have a program like this. They eventually had to just completely drop the whole program because of major lawsuit with so many property owners. Okay, this causes more expenses for the tenants and the landlords. We just self-passed a pretty large Arcata Fire Department tax increase.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dryer, that's your, that's your two minutes.
Oh, shoot, I had three more points. Scope three. Increase the cost of the city, disincentive for landlords to supply housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next is call-in user two, go ahead.
Hi, I'm a local property manager and landlord, and I'm actually against this for a number of reasons. One is the fire department does do their inspections. Um, Nature did say that your checklists are different. I would like to note that the fire department does not make appointments, they just show up. So I don't like that. There's also section eight, if somebody's getting section eight money, they're already getting inspected, so those should be excluded. Anything through section eight should be excluded. Section eight has a great program where they come in and do inspections. And then I just want to add what's obvious, but it doesn't seem obvious, but just like any business where supplies increase, the costs are passed on, in this case, to the consumer, but in this case to the tenant, the pass, it's going to be passed on. So if you really wanted to help, this program should be free unless there's a violation. Otherwise, it should be 100% free. That's how you're really going to help. At this point, all you're going to do is increase the rent to the tenant, probably the tenant's most in need, and you're also going to have more people coming through their house, coming into their homes. I'm just completely against this program. I think it's unnecessary in most cases. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jeff, go ahead.
Yes, hi, I'm a property manager and property owner in city of Arcata as well. You know, first of all, I just received notice of this today, so I wasn't aware. So I would very much like to be on whatever committee or talking point that we could do. I'm not against the, the program, but it probably will have the unintended consequence of raising rates. I, I'm in this program up in Seattle, and they do a flat fee up there, which is reasonable. And when it started out, it was for five years, and then they dropped it down to two years. You know, and they were pretty nitpicky. They, you know, like I had to put a peephole in the door because that was the code, and I had to change a Flex P-trap to hard-coded, you know? So it just depends on whether you want habitability or, or building code enforcement. So that's one of my main concerns. You know, we all strive to have habitable buildings, at least we should, and happy tenants and happy landlords go hand in hand. So, you know, this program, as I said, not completely won over by some of the fees and schedules. I think that could be ironed out a little bit. And then I do have to say that most of our problems have come from tenants modifying things without our consent. And so what are landlords to do in that situation? Because a lot of the times when we do inspections, we're surprised as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Do make sure that you reach out to Nature or myself at the city manager's office so we can get you on that list.
Yep.
Our next speaker is Rebecca. Go ahead, Rebecca.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Smith. I'm a tenant in Arcata, and I'm, I'm commenting in a pretty neutral capacity about this program. Um, but I have heard the council describing this program as a tenant protection, and I would just suggest that to the extent that this is an effort to protect tenants, um, you know, I do think it may be useful. I'm not completely sure on that, but, um, I would, I would have reservations about consenting to what is a government inspector coming in. That feels pretty different than a regular landlord request for entry. So I, I heard the city attorney describe that the program will rely on tenant consent. So maybe that's where, you know, like council member Schaefer was talking about generally educating tenants on their rights. I think that should be part of that, is helping tenants know their rights, including the right related to obtaining consent for the entry. But more broadly, I don't know that this program, if it is intended as a way to protect tenants, I think there's a lot more protective things for which there are ample examples of across the state, where other jurisdictions have adopted them, including regulations on rent, just cause for eviction, expanding the state protections that already exist. You know, specifically limiting or reducing the exemptions from the 2019 Tenant Protection Act. Um, so in other words, making more tenancies subject to compliance with that law. I think considering city facilitated know-your-rights or legal clinics with community partners is a good idea. Um, and of course, investing in low-income development. So I guess I would just suggest to the council that it maybe think more broadly about what is it to protect tenants and whether, whether the priorities are being properly considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
All right, and our next speaker is Colin. Colin, go ahead.
Hi, this is Colin Fisk, and I'm speaking on this item just as an individual, and I just wanted to note that my wife and I own a home in Arcata, and it has an ADU, which we rent out, so that makes me a landlord. And I'm happy that the city is doing something about this. I think it's important to make sure that folks who are renting are living in reasonable conditions, and I personally don't plan to adjust my rent in any way as a result of this. So I encourage the city to move forward. I also think that Rebecca's idea of pairing it with rental know-your-rights program is a really great one. A lot of renters and a lot of landlords don't know what the legal rights of renters are, so I think that's really important. Thank you.
All right, and I see no other public comment.
All right, bring it back to the council. Do we have more questions or comments from the council?
Um, I just had one thought. I heard a couple commentators talk about how a lot of violations are due to tenant actions. And I know that there can be kind of gray areas around, I guess, who is the responsible party. I've heard from renters that their landlord did not return their security deposit when they moved out because of mold growth that they managed to blame on the tenant when it was really due to substandard conditions. I was just wondering if there's a way we can ensure that the cost of any repairs or violations don't get passed to the tenant in that way. We already, you know, we've addressed, like, it's been addressed that rent could go up, but that security deposits are used to cover these, um, these repairs. I know it's kind of at the discretion of a landlord, but, um, you know, when things are kind of that gray area, I just want to make sure that this doesn't come back and punish tenants in that way.
Okay, why don't we look into that a little bit more thoroughly, and then we can bring back sort of a review of how, how that flows currently with code enforcement?
Thank you. Um, I just had one other quick comment. I did hear a lot of commentators talking about how that we as a council are going to be, you know, forcing them to raise rent on their tenants. And I really appreciate our, the last commenter saying that he would not be doing that because let, I just want to be very clear, we are not raising anybody's rent. You don't have to raise rent just because of these inspection fees, they're not particularly high. I think they're fairly reasonable, especially with how expensive rent can be around here. So I just want to be very clear, we are not raising anybody's rent. That is a choice that you are making. And so while it is totally fair to disagree with this program, I don't want that to be seen as, as a necessity of this program, because it is not.
I had a question, one of the comments mentioning section eight, housing already had their own inspection. Can you speak to that a little, Karen? And?
Yeah, Nature, do you want to confirm section eight would be exempt?
Yes, if they have their own inspection program, that it would be exempt. For any government agency who runs the rental program, and they have their own checklist, so it would be exempt, section eight.
I want to recognize that, you know, we have seen a lot of emails, and there have been a lot of calls in tonight, and I understand the frustration that you feel, that it seems that it has been sprung on you and that you haven't had a lot of time to comment. But from what I understand, this is, this is going to be quite a process moving forward, and so there'll be a lot of time for commenting. I can't imagine you're going to change your minds, but there'll be a lot of time to comment.
And I believe we have seen this before as a council, right? Or at least have received an update on this program, correct? I remember at least hearing about it.
Yeah, you first looked at this program back in March. It's been talked about for a long time, but one thing we do learn, and it's, and it is always a hard decision to make, you know, we find that once it actually comes before the council, it gets a lot of attention in the community versus, and it's hard sometimes for staff to roll out a program this robust and, and this, this kind of depth without sharing it with the council first, right? So it is kind of a chicken and an egg situation where we want the council to be really comfortable, being able to talk about the program with constituents, and yet still knowing that we need to do community outreach around the program to a lot of those constituents, so.
Yeah, I totally understand that. And I also just appreciated just the comments about some kind of tenant outreach. And I definitely think that the more I've been hearing from these comments and the comments of the council, that I would love to add that into this and make sure that there is some, you know, written down means for outreach to tenants so they know their rights.
Hopefully, one last thing on my end, just to add on to what council member Goldstein was saying about like the gray area, you know, of, like if tenants are making changes to the facility. And I think we should look at it from both sides, you know, so that if it is a tenant who's done something wildly wrong in the apartment, then, you know, the landlord has some protections too. So just to thoroughly kind of look at that, excuse me, balance.
And again, by doing this program, all of that is documented. So for both tenants and landlords, you know, we, we know that, yeah, it passed in the inspection here, and since you've lived here, it has deteriorated to this condition, and this is now wrong with it. It's all documented down the line, and actually makes it honestly probably easier for landlords to protect themselves against, you know, these kind of, you know, modifications without their consent to units, so. their consent to units, so.
All right, so I think with that, the recommendation is to introduce ordinance number 1552. And do we have a council member who would like to make that motion?
I would be happy to make the motion, but I wasn't, I guess I just wanted to check with the city manager, did we make too many suggestions to move forward?
In our discussion, I mean, so far, I feel like all of the suggestions that you've made, we can implement outside of the ordinance. We can implement through our partnership with HSU, through partnerships with local property managers, through the website implementation. But if there are specific teeth that you want associated with education or the distribution of know your rights, then that is something that, you know, we should hold, get more information, and then, and the city attorney is maybe wanting to chime in as well. Is there anything in particular, you've heard Nancy tonight, that you think we need to hold on?
No, I think with so many of these types of ordinances, Karen is right, we can work on these issues outside the ordinance. And if as we get into it in another six months to a year, we can bring it back with, you know, adjusting amendments, you know, after we've had a chance to see how it's working. I wanted to, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Karen, I just wanted to add to the recommended motion, that the council also waived reading of the ordinance and consent to read by title only. Otherwise, somebody's going to have to read the whole ordinance, which is rather tedious, read it out loud.
Did you have something else?
No, and then I would just say, if we could maybe have a quick discussion, do you want this to come back October 6th, or do we want a little bit more time to do public outreach? But you can introduce ordinance first as well.
Yeah, I would like more time, just because, you know, it comes out on the agenda at the end of last week, and then people see it. And I've had so many great conversations, but it's only been, you know, basically two days, two working days, that people have, I've got to have these conversations. So I would feel, I'm comfortable going, moving forward tonight, but I would feel more comfortable having a little bit more time to do that outreach and talk to people. So that's how I feel about it.
So how about, how do we feel about doing a month and bringing it back at the second meeting in October? Everyone okay with that, a month? Right.
Does that give staff enough time to do, have a meeting or two?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I make the motion now?
Yeah.
Sorry. I do feel like this is like the longest item ever. So I move to introduce ordinance number 1552, adding Chapter 5 Residential Rental Unit Inspection Program to Title, oh no, now I have to read Roman numerals, 8, Title 8, Building Regulations of the Arcata Municipal Code, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. And let's take a five-minute break. All right, welcome back to the meeting. Next, we have item B, consider supporting a pilot community ambassador program. May we please have a staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the second time that this council has discussed offering a pilot community ambassador program. Community ambassador programs are used across many cities in California, and each program is tailored to meet the specific needs of the community. But they all, in essence, are designed to provide a helpful presence in a neighborhood or a district through activities such as litter and graffiti abatement, providing directions to visitors, outreach referrals for those in need, safety escorts, and promoting events and activities in the neighborhood or in the business district to the area residents, to businesses, to workers in that district, and to visitors. So this program came before you, and tonight, I think specifically, it was a program that we had on the list when we looked at our ARPA list at the last meeting. And I think at that point, it kind of deferred, but simultaneously, there had been some additional community outreach, and we have sort of received this outpouring of interest in the program. So Vice Mayor Atkinson has asked that we bring this back and revisit it, I think, based a lot on that input and that community outreach, and just to see if we wanted to take the next step in trying to develop that program. So I'll turn it over to our Vice Mayor to add anything.
Thank you. Yeah, when we did, when we were negotiating for ARPA funding, I didn't bring it up. It was a smaller dollar amount, and I just felt that there was really, there were bigger things on there, and I really wasn't sure. We hadn't had a lot of discussion about it. But then, following the article that was in the newspaper, there has been a lot of enthusiasm and outreach, so I thought that I would bring that back to the council to see if we could get funding, excuse me, for that program. So if we'd like to talk about that anymore. I know the two places that we could get it is from our ARPA funds, which we did set aside, that the million to kind of see where things went, so that would come out of that, our savings. But the only other place would be the general fund and the reserve, I guess, general fund reserve. And I feel less comfortable dipping into that, because I feel once, you know, once we start doing that, we might continue. And so since the ARPA is technically extra money, I don't have a, I don't really have a problem with dipping into what we've set aside to save. So I'd just love to have a discussion about that.
How much money were we talking about with the community ambassador program? Was it like $250,000?
It was $260,000, which would be, and Karen, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the two-year project that would include the, you know, paying for the employees, as well as hiring someone to help develop this program. So that would be included in that.
Yeah, I mean, I would be for taking that, the one million we set aside for other stuff. Other than that, I support the project.
I just want to say that I really support this program. I think it's a wonderful thing. I think it really hits, you know, all the things that are important to us. It hits, you know, our local businesses, and it hits, you know, the people feeling safe, and, you know, with, you know, picking up trash and litter removal, I think it hits kind of our, you know, being cognizant of our earth too. So I am, I think there's been such overwhelming support by so many local business owners and citizens that I think it's fantastic.
So, yeah, I think, I think it would be appropriate to take it out of the ARPA funds, and then, you know, during this, for have, you know, to develop it for, as a two-year project, and then during that time, also maybe work to find a more permanent funding source for something like this, whether it be through the police budget, or perhaps, you know, through other fundraising efforts or grant efforts that we could look into as well, or just kind of some redirection of public safety funds into a project like this, that will do so much to benefit, you know, people's feeling safe in our community. I'm happy with this program. I just, you know, I know this is very preliminary stages, and I guess this is the opportunity to talk about the reservations and just questions that I want to ask. And I just see so much possibility with this program too, of being able to partner and work with HSU, work with students in social work and recreation, in psychology, whatever that might be, criminal justice through HSU, and be able to even perhaps somewhere down the line, offer, you know, an internship program for students at HSU to be able to work with somebody to be, you know, community ambassadors. And then also, of course, working with Main Street and the Chamber too, I mean, you know, or even people, yeah, in the Business Department at HSU, working, you know, with all of these different community partners, and just who we can really bring to the table to make sure it's not just, oh yeah, that person that stands on the plaza and calls the cops on everybody. Because that's really not what this is about, and I don't think this is, you know, your intent behind it at all either. And to make it something that really is a community ambassador, it's somebody that is engaging with people, is helping clean up litter, is directing tourists, is greeting people, helping keep our business areas clean, and also, you know, being trained in equity, conflict resolution, and restorative practices, and being able to, you know, talk to people in a way that, you know, does not escalate conflict, and, you know, being familiar and knowing just what services the city or even the county can offer, being able to work closely with our now-expanding MIST team to also help people get services that they might need, working with Arcata House Partnership, working with AHA, who's down at the transit station at least twice a month, I believe. And so really, just making sure whoever, you know, we work with to develop a program like this are really engaging all of our community partners. And, you know, I even see possibility and benefit of hiring houseless individuals, or recently houseless individuals, to help, you know, with at least the trash cleanup part, and working, you know, as ambassadors to, you know, reach out to folks that have been in a similar situation to them, or might even be in the same situation as them now, and say, hey, you know, let's, this is still our community. I see my houseless individuals in my neighborhood as my neighbors, you know, and keeping, you know, working all together to keep that area clean, I think would have just so much more of an impact on our community than, you know, it just, it's got to be the right person, you know, or the right people. And just really engaging all of these partnerships, I think, is going to be so important, and I know that's what we all want to do anyway. So, yeah, that's what I got. Thank you.
I agree with so much of what's been said. Just logistics, I think that, I agree, I think taking it from the ARPA funds makes a lot of sense. Why am I losing my train of thought? I would say that the, my, I guess my only concern, and I voiced this last time, was just that I don't want to see any type of overpolicing of houseless folks or people of color in the community. I would, I mean, the list that we have been provided with in terms of the intention is exactly what I think we should stick to, and the type of activity that we should do. It's about supporting and uplifting and adding positivity to the community. I'd love to see, in terms of training, I'd like to see this person or people go through restorative justice-type training, an implicit bias training, so not just cultural sensitivity, but something that teaches people to check their own internal biases. And then I would really like to have the entire council be part of the hiring process for the ambassadors. I just think that since this is, this is a program coming from, you know, what we're hearing from constituents, and that the Vice Mayor brought forward, I think it's really important to keep us in the loop. And, yeah, so I would just like to see us be part of that hiring process when we eventually come to that. So, yeah, I mean, I do support this. I think, you know, again, just, I want to be very careful that we don't cross into that territory of overpolicing already policed communities and feed into a cycle of arrest again and again and again, which, again, I don't think is the intention of this program, but could be an unintended consequence if we're not cognizant of it. So that's, I think that's all I had right now.
I will just mention briefly that I did have an Arcata Chamber of Commerce meeting today, and I talked briefly about this, and the chamber is really excited about helping any way that they can.
Thank you. And one thing I had thought of, I don't know logistically how things work, but I did talk, Councilmember Goldstein and I had a conversation about this last week, and we both were in agreement, the same as what you were bringing up, Councilmember Schaefer, about it being the right person for the job, and that the program is designed well. And I know that since it's something I'm putting forth, I do plan to be as involved as I can with that process. And so my idea, I'm not, I'm not opposed to having the whole council participate, but I don't also know what we are and aren't allowed to do. So I was, my original suggestion was going to be that maybe we team up, Councilmember Goldstein, since you did have, I think, the most reservations last time, and then we could, you know, we could both work on making sure that we feel like it's a good program, and that that person who is getting hired, that we're in agreement with, and then probably our peers would feel hopefully comfortable with that.
Yeah, I would be absolutely willing and happy to join you in that. And, yeah, yeah, whatever the, you're right, I don't, I have no idea what the, what our, what our constraints are in terms of that. But for two of us, I would be absolutely happy to join you in that.
I'd be totally fine with that.
I mean, I kind of like the idea of the council being the hiring committee, and doing the interviews, and selecting the person, similar to what we do with the, you know, our other committees, so everybody has input into it, unless you, you know, would prefer to do a subcommittee.
No, I'm, I'm fine. I'm just, you know, unclear of what we are and aren't allowed to do, so. to do, so.
I think we need to be careful in terms of depending on how we structure this. So if we are looking at doing a request for proposals and bringing out a consultant to build the program, there could be at least a subcommittee of the Council. I think they could participate in that. You do serve as the city's personnel board, so being active in the hiring of part-time staff associated with the city would not be an appropriate activity for the Council individually or collectively to participate in. But let me work through some of that and I can bring you back a recommendation. I don't, I mean, and I think ultimately, we're going to have a lot of ambassadors, right? I mean, the idea is we bring on a person right now to help create that program. And then, you know, that person would hopefully oversee that program and be, you know, hiring multiple, I'm anticipating six to eight, at least at any one time ambassadors, maybe 10 that would be working in the program. So, but I'll look into some of that for you.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like there should be a, a way to do it. I mean, we do hire the city manager and the city attorney. So maybe the person works directly for the Council. Yeah, just a thought. Do you have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Yes, we'll start with Arcata Main Street. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Shoshana. I didn't actually mean to represent Arcata Main Street right now, I'm so sorry. I do work with them though, and I have in that capacity heard from a lot of downtown business folks that are very enthusiastic about the idea of having more presence concentrated on security, on, on just the, the general idea of being well taken care of. Having a trained knowledgeable eye on our public spaces seems like a great idea for security, for keeping things nice, for being a positive presence and resource for people downtown and someone who knows when to call for help and emergency response if needed. But just letting businesses and folks downtown knowing that their concerns are being heard. And that just really sounds like a great idea to me and my experiences recently downtown. And I, again, sorry, I'm not really representing Arcata Main Street here, but definitely have been delighted by the development of this idea. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the letter K. Go ahead. You can unmute yourself. It just shows screen name K.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Awesome. Hi, I just wanted to chime in and say that as a plaza business employee, I have witnessed many, many inappropriate behaviors amongst our vagrant homeless population on a daily basis that has been portraying our beautiful plaza as a dark and unsafe place for locals, tourists and college students. Numerous fights, drug dealing, unruly dogs, panhandling, aggressive threatening outbursts from those struggling with mental health, harassment of shop owners and trash and urine literally everywhere is now our norm. It absolutely breaks my heart to constantly witness parents clutching their children, the look of terror in tourist eyes as they're detoured from experiencing our lovely local shops and restaurants. I believe that we desperately need someone positioned on the plaza to help ensure the safety of our community and visitors. I would like to very strongly advocate for Stacey's Ambassador Program and hope that we can stop this madness before more people or businesses are seriously hurt. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Matt. Go ahead, Matt.
Hello, can you all hear me?
We can.
All right, so thank you. This is the reason I want to call. I just wanted to call and say, I'm at 944 H Street, Matt Babbage. I'm a 55-year resident of Arcata, born and raised, as they say. And we need help. My employees do not feel safe. We constantly deal with broken windows, defecation, trash, crime, car break-ins, you name it. You guys already know all this. I'm not going to blame one certain group for that, that's unfair, but we need help. And I think the Community Ambassador Program is a great idea. Let's go get it done. But at the same time, please do not take more funding from police to do it. And furthermore, you have vacant positions on the police department now that I believe need to be filled until we feel safe. The same token, once you get the police back up to ranks, let's get some social workers down there. Let's get some counselors and some therapists. I like the idea of partnering with Humboldt State, get them down there. Let's help some of these people get off the street. But there's some bad, dangerous customers in the downtown area and something needs to be dealt with it. So appreciate your time and I'd say let's get the Community Ambassador Program rolling.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Our next speaker is Kevin. Go ahead, Kevin. Go ahead, Kevin. Can you unmute yourself?
Okay, Kevin Dreyer, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I ditto what the past two speakers said in all earnest. I have clients that are wanting to buy a second home here. They witnessed what was going on downtown in Arcata after both being HSU alumni. And they would like to look in McKinleville. So they witnessed a knife fight because they got to the farmer's market early. They were pretty much appalled by the whole vibe going on downtown in Arcata. And so I agree with everyone. Let's, let's get some help down there. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kevin. I don't see any other public comment.
All right, bring it back to the Council. Is there any more questions or comments?
This isn't really about the program because I completely, I do support the Ambassador Program. I would just ask the public, I get that we, every, every person is hurting right now. Please remember that every person, whether they're housed or not, whether they're acting the way that you think that they should be or not, is a human being. And to just, just keep that in mind. That, that every person in our community is actually a community member, whether they live in a house or not, and that they are human. That's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. All right. So we probably need a motion. Yep. Somebody like to make a motion?
So I would like to make a motion to support a pilot Community Ambassador Program.
Sounds good to me.
Second?
All right, we have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have new business, item A, Consider the City of Arcata 2021-23 Legislative Platform. Do you have a staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Your legislative platform really is just a summary of some of the locally approved policy statements. And it literally just gives the mayor and staff an opportunity to be nimble in responding to legislation as it's working its way through the legislative process. The city recognizes the need for, you know, active legislative engagement at the local and the state and the federal levels to protect and enhance the interests of Arcata. And the platform has just really allowed us to be nimble in the implementation of that, that advocacy on behalf of our residents and businesses here. You know, in, in short, since this is a very new Council, historically, this is your legislative platform and however you as a Council want to develop it, you know, is completely within your purview. In the past, the Council really felt like only things that were unanimously supported or unanimously opposed by the Council should make the legislative platform. And if there were other areas that one or two or three of you were interested in having advocacy for, that those items would come back specific, as specific agenda items when it was relevant, to have discussion on very specific legislation with the whole Council. So, you know, what I have found over the years is that we tend to add things. We don't tend to take things off, so the list just gets longer. But, so, you know, and we, and there's no specific timeframe on this in terms of when it has to be passed or, and any time that you want to bring it back for updating, you can. So I did look through and just tried to cross out a few that I just felt like we hadn't used at all in the last five years. But it wasn't to say that they weren't things that we didn't support or oppose anymore either. And then the only things that, that we added were things that either you had unanimously sent letters for in the past, or a couple of things that had come up really recently. So I did want to draw your attention to what's on page 179 of your packet. This would be under environment and climate change, the new number 14, supporting legislation that prohibits the storage handling, transport of coal, petroleum coke in jurisdictions in Humboldt County, including Arcata, was added. As well as there's been talk and interest in a request to support the Nordic Aqua Farms efforts providing land-based aquaculture facility on the Samoa Peninsula. So those were two that had, were slated to come before you that we've added onto here for your discussion. So anything else that you would like to add? Anything else that you would like to delete? We just bring it before you once every couple of years to refresh.
Can I ask me? So I would like, under environment and climate change, I would really love to add support for development of offshore wind and local microgrids.
That's what I was going to say. I was double, I was double making sure it wasn't on there and that's what I was going to say. Yeah, I would also like to see support for offshore wind. And I think, well, they talk about support for solar, but it doesn't specifically say anything about microgridding. And I know with the airport, that's, you know, already being developed in our community and they're looking for, you know, further options and locations to do things like that as well. So in agreement on that.
Is that unanimous agreement on those? Okay. We do have one. Colin, go ahead.
Hi, this is Colin Fisk again. This time for this comment, I am speaking on behalf of ROKER, the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility. So first of all, I wanted to thank you for adding the opposition to the latest major environmental threat, which is the prospect of coal trains. So I'm glad to see that in there. Had a couple of concerns. There specifically, I want to cite the opposition to state mandated development standards or procedures and the support of local control of land use decisions. I know that those things sort of generically sound good, but in practice, I think they lead the city to oppose land use reform measures which are desperately needed to increase housing and sustainable transportation and address historic inequities. So for example, Arcata's own plans notwithstanding, California cities have clearly shown that left to their own devices, most of them will retain most of their land base in single-family zoning districts, which drastically limits housing production and keeps prices high and perpetuates historic inequities. Single-family zoning is a complicated thing, but basically it's a historical invention that was meant to keep people of color out of white neighborhoods and it often still has this effect. It also prevents the level of density required to make low-carbon transportation convenient for most residents. Many of California cities have also shown that they can't or won't on their own prioritize building out bike, pedestrian and transit networks over maintaining our historically fossil fuel powered, car-dominated transportation system. State action is really needed to mandate these kinds of changes, even though it involves taking away some measure of local control. And I think Arcata should support that. So I would encourage you to specify support for those kinds of actions in the legislative platform and to remove the blanket opposition to state mandated, state mandated development standards. I also wanted to highlight a few additional items that I think are important from an environmental perspective that are missing, including support for legislation that increases the total and proportional funding for active transportation and transit, supporting legislation that streamlines walkable infill housing development, supporting programs that provide funding and other forms of support for the full build-out of EV charging stations, and supporting legislations to address historic and current environmental injustices related to pollution, land use, transportation and resources. Thanks.
Yeah, maybe you can submit that to us. Colin knows a lot. It's kind of hard for me. You know, I definitely like to support the things you bring to us. But if you could, yeah, if you could submit all that to us, we don't have to necessarily put it on there tonight. We can bring this back at any time and add those things. But I'd be grateful if you could send that to myself or the city manager. Is there anything that we, out of his list, that we want to tack on right now? I mean, I kind of, I lost track a little bit. I got, last thing I heard was a full build-out of, of EV charging stations. I'm not sure.
And, and I know Colin mentioned something about infill as well, which I know we're very supportive of and have our own city plan for that as well. And so if that's not on here, I think that's important. Two, I know, I think it's mentioned somewhere, but yeah.
I think he was primarily referring to on your packet, page 179, under land use planning, number two, opposing legislation that would impose state mandated development standards or procedures. It does go on in our legislative platform to say that are contrary to the city of Arcata's general plan are land use policy.
Where is that again?
It's on page 179, under land use planning, number two.
Well, I mean, it says contrary to the general plan or local land use policy. I mean, yeah. I mean, that kind of makes sense to me to oppose stuff that's contrary to our general plan and local land use policy. But again, yeah, please submit that to us or give me a call or however you want to communicate about it and we'll, we'll bring this back.
If you wouldn't mind see seeing me, I'd love to hear all your suggestions and, or see all your suggestions in writing so I can keep up with it. Because they were really great. Thank you.
Yeah, send it to us all. Because I'd like to see it. Well, I guess we'll see it when it's on the thing as well. But either way.
All right, do we have any other members of the public that want to comment? No?
No.
All right. So any more questions or comments from the Council? So we need a motion to approve the changes?
If you want to approve some changes tonight, you can. If you want me to incorporate what Colin Fisk sends forward in track changes version for you to review at your next meeting, I could do that as well. So the Council.
Is it more work if we approve stuff tonight and then approve stuff later? No? Okay. Whatever you guys want to do. I mean, you know, we can just approve stuff now, it sounds like, and then add more later.
So then I make a motion to approve the City of Arcata 2021-23 Legislative Platform with the addition of supporting the development of offshore wind and local microgrids.
A second?
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have new business B. Introduce ordinance number 1551, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending Title VI, Chapter IV, Section 6566 of the Arcata Municipal Code, reauthorizing the public, educational and government fee on state cable video service franchises operating in the City of Arcata, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only, and approve the renewal of the Cable Video Services Agreement with Access Humboldt and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Do you have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. As explained in this staff report, the actions before you are essentially housekeeping or routine items. The introduction of ordinance 1551 is a revision for our current municipal code regarding fees that the city receives from state franchise cable video service provider to support access to public educational and government or PEG services. Due to potential confusion in the interpretation of the Public Utilities Code language, that might indicate the PEG fee must also be reauthorized each time the franchisee is renewed with the state. The proposed Arcata Municipal Code revision serves as a housekeeping item to clearly secure Arcata's continued collection of cable franchise fees. The amendment is not intended to impose a newer and increased fee, but rather is intended to reauthorize the already existing PEG fee at the same level and ensure any continued reauthorization that may be needed to be able to continue to collect the fee. Additionally, before you tonight, the city contracts with Access Humboldt here locally to develop and provide the PEG access services for our region. The services agreement is up for renewal and staff is asking Council to approve the renewal through May of 2024 and authorize the city manager to execute the, the agreement. And with that, I'll turn it back to Council for any questions. And if desired or needed, we also have the Executive Director from Access Humboldt, Sean McLaughlin, here tonight, if there's any questions of him as well. Thank you.
All right, do we have questions or comments from the Council? Seeing none, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
No public comment on this item.
All right. Can we have a motion? May we please?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we introduce ordinance number 1551, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending Title VI, Chapter IV, Section 6566 of the Arcata Municipal Code, reauthorizing the public, educational, and government fee on state cable video service franchises operating in the city of Arcata, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only, and that we approve the renewal of the Cable Video Services Agreement with Access Humboldt, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And next, we have oral and written communications. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council may be limited to three minutes with a maximum of five minutes, and a time limit on the overall length of oral communications may be imposed. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on items not on tonight's agenda?
Please raise your Zoom hand if you would like to make final public comment tonight. Seeing none, we have no public comment.
All right. Moving on to council and staff reports. And first, we have item A, recognition of Yom Kippur holiday. Councilmember Matthews, please.
Thanks, Mayor Watson. I just want to acknowledge that tonight, at sundown, began Yom Kippur, which is the most solemn of Jewish holidays. I think it's important to recognize and call this out, as oftentimes, meetings and other events are scheduled on these holy days without understanding the importance of it. Yom Kippur is the culmination of the days of all, starting with Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, and ending tomorrow night. During these days, it's important for us to reflect on the past year, make amends with those we have hurt, and wipe our slate clean for a fresh new start. I bring this up because I've been appalled lately at the rise of hate crimes in Arcata against not only Jews, but our LBG, TQIA, and BIPOC community. In the past few weeks, I've seen buttons worn by community members with Jewish stars on them, comparing being vaccinated to millions of Jews and others who did not have a choice led to their slaughter during the Holocaust. Comments comparing our houseless populations to Jews and wanting them to be shipped out in cattle cars. Local friends and business owners finding racist, white supremacist hate-filled materials on their doorstep. I just want to say, stop it. Hate has no place in Arcata. I hope that we all, Jewish or not, can at least spend a few minutes reflecting on our actions this past year, and come together in this new year with compassion and understanding, and commit to future change. Gemara Hatima Tova, may you be inscribed in the book of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next, we have receive an update from City Engineer, Nitya Kotri, on transit performance and ridership data.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, and members of staff and public. We never get a chance to give you an update on transit. We are still running and running good. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on what we are doing and what are our big projects and the future plan. Just to start with, you know, we still have our two routes, red route and green route. Our red route is an east-west route, I call it, and the red route, or the gold route, is a north-south bound. And we also have a route we call the orange route, which runs only on the weekends. Prior to COVID, we were running red and gold route on the weekdays, and orange route only on Saturdays. Since the start of the COVID, we have changed our schedule, and we will be running only orange routes during the COVID period, most of the time. But currently, again, with the start of HSU, we are exploring other options to get students from place to place. So currently, we are running red and gold route from morning 7:00 to evening 6:00. And from evening 6:00 to 10:00, we are running orange route. And on the weekends, we are still running the orange route. Our riderships are definitely down. As you know, with COVID, there are less students in town, less people using the transit system. So at one time, prior to COVID, we had as much as 200 riders in a given year. And this year, at the end of June 30, 2021, in last one year, we just had only 54,000 riders. So that's a significant drop in our ridership. For the main projects, you saw through your budget process, we are purchasing, are planning to purchase two electric buses. We already placed an order for them. They will be arriving here in 2023. And once that comes online, we will add a new line to our system, which we will be calling our green line, that will have a high-frequency stops, and that will be connecting HSU to downtown and just bit south of Samoa. That is our plan, and that we plan to implement that in 2023. Other major project is that through PSPs, as you know, when there was no power or electricity, you are not able to run the transit system. So this year, we'll be installing a backup generator, which was funded through state of good repair, and that will be installed. That construction will happen this year. Other quick update is, we are still running, we are still helping Greyhound. However, the, the number of trips that Greyhound makes to the Arcata has reduced from prior to COVID. I would say, right now, there's only one bus that comes in the morning, oh, sorry, in the afternoon, 2:15. And recently, we got an email from Greyhound staff that they will be releasing their service here. Instead of seven days a week, they will be doing only five days. So there will be no Greyhound service starting September 20 on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Amtrak service is still at, I would say, prior to COVID level, and they run twice a day, I would say, at 7:00 AM in the morning and at 10:00 AM in the morning. And they are still continuing to provide the service, and we will be in communication with them. And also, just for your information, you know, we do get commission through Greyhound service, through the ticket sales, but through Amtrak, we don't get any commissions or any money from that service. So that was just a quick snapshot and update I wanted to give you. Now, I also wanted to invite, if you are interested and you want to ride the bus, please call us, and we would like to give you our tour of our routes, and we'd be good to meet with the drivers and staff. So with that, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me questions. Thank you again.
Thanks, Nitya. Any questions or comments from the council? Do you have anything else the staff would like to report out tonight?
No, nothing more tonight.
All right. Bring it to the council. Do you have any council members that would like to share with the council any, any other happening since the last council meeting?
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Matthews for her statement. I think it was beautifully, beautifully said. And I commend your strength. For me, it's a privilege to not be the only Jewish woman on council anymore. I appreciate having you as a colleague. And I think too often antisemitism is erased in our society. And yes, I just, I just wanted to say thank you. I really appreciate your statement.
All right. Go ahead.
I just had a question for my colleagues on the council. I wanted to get your opinion. Since we do, we're, we're getting a lot of continued emails and correspondence from, from Health Fort and the camping that's going on there. And I know that we, we did set aside money for safe parking, and we've, we've, I think, agreed that that's one of our top priorities, and that that needs to really move forward quickly. So I was thinking it might be a good idea just to have a short update at, at each council meeting as to the progress. I mean, maybe some days, nothing has been done towards it, but just to keep ourselves on task and to let the community know that we are diligently working on that. So, but I also don't know if you feel that that's too much. So that's just a question for the rest of you.
That's easy enough to do, right? We just do a regular update for next couple months or something?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I could give you a quick update tonight, if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
Great suggestion.
My report out tonight is that last night, I met with the executive board of Arcata House Partnership about the safe parking program. So they are actively working. And then we met with the homeless services working group today, and we talked about it as a group around the safe parking program. Arcata House is actively working on a proposal of how they think they could build that out, and what that service provision would look like. And as soon as she completes that, you know, we said we would connect early next week, just to see if she needs any more support in the development of that. And then I will bring that proposal back to the council for review. But so, yeah, we have at least had some active meetings on it, and Arcata House Partnership is working up that proposal right now for you.
Good. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other reports? Doesn't look like it. And next, we have dates of future meetings. Special meeting to hold a walking tour of the Arcata Gateway Plan Area Tuesday, next Tuesday, September 21st at 5:30 PM. And I believe we'll be meeting at City Hall?
Yeah, we'll just be meeting right out front in the lawn, and we will take off from there. So the planning commission did a trial run for us last night, and I think they had a really good time. So.
Great. All right. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.